Good afternoon. I want to thank the media for attending today's news conference. It's been a rough few months, but I believe we are turning a corner and I'm optimistic about the future. Before we begin this news conference, I want to ask for a moment of silence for the victims and families of the tragic shooting in Nashville on yesterday and our Raleigh Egypt High School student who passed. Thank you. First, I must say how much I appreciate my colleagues serving on the board with me. The last few months have been rough, but I know we are committed to working together to make this district the best for all the children represented. The selection of Dr. Rod Richmond as our interim superintendent is a step in the right direction. I know he is up for the task and loves working for MSCX. We look forward to working with him to continue to move this district forward. Transitioning leadership can bring uncertainties, but they also bring new opportunities for growth and improvement. We are committed to work collaboratively with the interim superintendent to ensure a smooth transition, clear priorities, and an unwavering focus on student success. Our job is to provide support, oversight, and guidance to ensure that our district moves forward in the right direction. Unity does not mean we always agree. We listen, we respect, and we work towards solutions together. No matter our backgrounds, perspectives, or positions, we all want the same thing, to continue to give a high-quality education that empowers every student. Our new interim superintendent will need our trust, our collaboration, and honest feedback to help guide this district forward. I am asking the policy governors and legislative affairs chair Stephanie Love and vice chair Natalie McKinley to convene a board governors training plan discussion by February the 10th, 2025, February the 10th. A few of my colleagues would like to share a few remarks today and our interim superintendent would have company. We would take questions from the reporters, but are limited to what we can say due to pending litigation by our former superintendent. At this time, I would bring school board member Amber Hewitt Garcia for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Amber Hewitt Garcia. I'm a school board member for District Eight. When I ran for school board, I was committed to focusing on resources for academic progress, strengthening our community partnerships, and creating and executing a comprehensive facilities plan, looking at our buildings not just in the physical infrastructure, but the programming within them. We cannot do this work alone at Memphis Shelby County Schools. I'm committed to advocating for our students and families by facing and taking on systemic issues we need, and we need the community, and we need other elected bodies to help us deliver. Each day we spend not focused on children is a mistake. No matter who is sitting in the seat of superintendent, the board needs to hold them accountable and govern. Strong governance will be key to our success, and I know my colleagues would agree with me on this. I'm interested in finding a path forward and working closely with them to prioritize our staff, teachers, and students. I'm committed to working with interim superintendent Dr. Richmond and his staff, and as budget chair, I look forward to collaborating and giving the study. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Commissioner Tawana Murphy, District Seven. As board members, we are responsible for ensuring that our district is operating effectively, responsibly, and in the best interest of our students, staff, and community. Over the past several months, we have watched, we listened, and we allowed for leadership to make the necessary adjustments. But at some point, our duty requires us to step in and do what we need to do. So on Tuesday night, we made a change in our leadership. Let's take a moment to reflect on what has transpired under the former superintendent's leadership. One, contracts have not been handled in a timely manner, leaving the district with expired services. In some cases, we had critical services become inoperable with no plan in place to address them. Two, the board explicitly instructed the former interim superintendent not to terminate employees without presenting a clear plan and how it would impact the district and align with the strategic plan. Despite this, terminations continue without a plan. Three, the Mastery Connect Assessment Program was canceled without replacement, putting the district at risk of failing to meet state testing, monitoring, and tracking to prepare students. Four, we've seen employees leave their jobs and high turnovers in the central office, stripping the district of key expertise and leaving critical issues inoperable. For nearly nine months, we exercised patience, we have given grace, we have allowed time for adjustments, progress, and course of correction. But our responsibility as board members is not to sit back while our district suffers. It was time for us to act, and we did what we must do best for our community and for our students. I voted for the interim superintendent Rod Richmond because he is the right person to lead this district. I look forward to working with him and our other staff members. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Marcus Porter, school board representative for District Four. We have a crucial time in education here in our city of Memphis. I just want to give a public call, a call to action for the public. Now is not the time to be divided. Now is the time to show unity. My colleagues and I, we represent nine different districts, and now is the time to show the city that, hey, yeah, we may disagree on issues, but all of us have the children in the best interest. I'm a newly elected board member. I took time to talk to my principals, talk to my constituents, I did a town hall meetings, I read emails, spent countless hours on the phone, and ultimately come up with the best decision of what I thought that was possible to move our district forward. And I'm here standing in unity with my other colleagues, and so hopefully we can move this district forward. I hold hard to support Dr. Rod Richmond, and I vote to move the district forward, but I have a call to action for the citizens of Memphis. I am excited about everybody that's excited about education, but let's move the district forward and come up with positive solutions that we can all seek and we can all help our children move this district forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I have been serving on the school board for 11 years. Tuesday night, we made the right decision for the future of Memphis and Shelby County School, the students in which we serve. Dr. Rod Richmond and I have known each other for many years. He is no stranger to the community or this board. Before becoming interim superintendent, Dr. Rod Richmond was a transformation officer in Shelby County Schools. He worked closely with the schools from a letter grade to a D R F to the academic success we all need. For more than three decades, his experience as an educator and administrator, Dr. Rod Richmond has built a strong leadership of results with his track record as a chief academic officer, a principal, and a assistant principal and a teacher. Rod Richmond will provide steady leadership and experience for this district while working closely with the community and the district and the board. I am pleased to announce our interim superintendent of Memphis and Shelby County Schools, Dr. Rod Richmond.
Good afternoons.
Good afternoon.
First of all, I want to just start off, I just thank God for this opportunity. I also want to thank our senior leaders who are here today to support me. I want to thank you all, the media, for being here. I want to thank our viewing audience, and I also want to thank our board members for being here today, but also for trusting me for this opportunity. I'm both humbled and excited to be continuing to serve this community and this school system. For over 30 years of service, my roles have changed, but my focus and vision have not. My focus and vision have always been about the students and this great district and community. As I worked to develop my first 100-day plan, my senior leadership team and I are focused on three things. First, we want to focus on continuity and stability. Second, we want to focus on ensuring that we are streamlining our processes to ensure that our schools are receiving the materials and resources that they so much need and deserve. And lastly, we want to make sure that we're meeting and having those key conversations with elected officials and key influencers throughout our community to ensure that we're all working together collaboratively to ensure that we're improving our district, but also improving the relationships that we know we must have to move this district and our community forward. As all of the board members have said, I believe I am the right person at the right time to do this most important work for our school district and our community. Again, I ask the community to trust me, to trust our board members, to trust our leadership teams, to trust our principals, to trust our teachers, to trust that we can get this right and we will do it right to move our school district and community forward. Again, I appreciate all of you all, each and every one of you all who know me, know that I have a love for this community and district. So again, thank you, board members, for entrusting me for this opportunity. Thank you. I also want to thank, again, the leadership team. We had a meeting on yesterday, and I believe the meeting that we had was extremely productive. And again, I thank you all. Thank you.
What questions, media, do you have for the board or the interim superintendent?
Doctor.
One question at a time.
Okay.
One of the things you said was you used the word trust. Can you?
Yes, yes.
You used the word trust. And Tuesday night, this week, there was a lot of upset people, you yourself, or nobody else, or whatever he did. But right now, how do you see the board, and this time they're stepping into this role, how do you think you can rebuild trust right now? Because that is a really tough thing right now for parents, educators, the community. And that's what she said, that she said, you want to build us on integrity and stability, also trust.
Well, to build trust, I think we have to operate with true transparency and integrity. I often tell administrators and people that I coach and develop, I can coach you around anything but integrity. And so we have to make sure that we're operating with integrity, we're operating ethically, and we're operating above board. I think those things come by ensuring that our words and deeds match in everything that we do each and every day.
Next, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Joyce Doris Coleman.
Hold on, hold on, Laura, one question. She has one for the superintendent, and then I'll go next.
Dr. Richmond, how do you feel about the board wanting to appoint you at this juncture, considering that you were not a finalist when you wanted to be the superintendent? It's almost like, you know, a dream not deferred or denied, but now they want to appoint you, but you didn't make it to the final pick.
Yes, that's a great question, and I really appreciate you asking that question because I'm really going to answer that question. Based on law, the district has to have a superintendent. On Tuesday night, the board made a decision that didn't concern or involve me, which was to move on and to select another superintendent. There were two people nominated at that time. One of the individuals nominated was Dr. Whitelaw, who declined, and the other one that was nominated was myself, and I accepted. If you think about any school organization, when you're looking at that school organization, what happens in most instances when you're talking about replacing a superintendent and needing an interim superintendent? You're first going to look at senior leadership, and who are those senior leaders? From that, I think the board deducted that the two superintendent or superintendent leaders or people who had had senior leadership was Dr. Whitelaw and I, and we were both nominated. I accepted. The reason I accepted was because of my loyalty and commitment to this district and our children. What would have happened if no one had accepted this task? And I know it is a heavy task to bring this community back together, but I was willing to take it on.
Thank you, interim superintendent. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Chairwoman Doris Coleman, Laura, your question.
I have two questions.
I have two questions for the superintendent.
Okay, we'll get that.
I think that we need to hear from Chair Doris Coleman about the directive for interim superintendent Rod Richmond.
Hold on, hold on. Dr. Richmond, we'll get back to you. Madam Chair, your question, Laura.
Chair, thank you so much. Could you explain to us the directive that this board has given interim superintendent Robert Richmond, and what kind of plans and how the board will decide whether it will embark on a new superintendent search?
At this time, we have not yet decided about the new superintendent search. That's nine of us, and we're going to work together on that question and answer that, and whether or not we will do an external or internal, how the search would go for a superintendent. And you know, Dr. Richmond has only been on the job for less than four days now. We have not had the time, chance to sit down and meet with him. We understand his commitment, and we're committed with him. We're committed to move this district, continue to move this district forward. So once we have a chance to sit down with him and go over everything with him, we will come back and let you know that he says he has a 100-day, 100-day plan, and we, the board, would like to know about his plan and how we can work collaboratively for the plan.
Board Chair, I also have a question. The district paid Doris Ray a settlement to part ways with him when he was accused of fireable offenses. Why take a different approach with Dr. Fagans?
We...
What was the question?
The board paid a settlement with Doris Ray when he had fireable offenses. Why take a different approach with Dr. Fagans?
We have not taken a approach with Dr. Fagans. Right now, this is going to go into a legal matter, so I will leave it at that for right now. Once we find out what hires are shown, I'm telling you.
Okay, I also have a follow-up question. Would you say to Memphisians who vote that the district is finally entering a period of stability with Dr. Fagans?
We are in a stability with interim superintendent Dr. Rod Richmond.
All right.
The leadership changes, but the work continues on. We have work to do, so that has not changed. My committee, my colleagues' commitment to making sure this work is done, it has not changed.
April, question for you.
What is going to change as far as the process of going through this agenda? Do you start and stop the process of searching for superintendent? There we got one, and that person was fired. So what is the process? What are you going to do differently to get to a point where we have a permanent superintendent?
We don't know yet. We have not yet to discuss the next steps as the superintendent role goes, and I don't want to mislead or say something that's inaccurate. So once we come together as a board, we decide the next steps, if we're going to do a search, if we're going to... What steps will be, we'll announce it.
A national search?
I don't know yet.
Board Chair, have you all considered his contract yet?
Not yet. This is the first time some of my colleagues have seen Dr. Richmond since Tuesday.
I have a question for you, interim superintendent. We've heard criticisms from some in the community, most of the school leaders, board members, Tawana Murphy explained them in a bit more detail here, having to do with getting brought up also by board member McKinney before, having to do with getting contracts to on certain academic programming. Talk to us about what will change. Will you be changing, will you be making changes to senior leadership? How will you be addressing some of the changes that critics of Fagans did have with the way that she led?
That's an excellent question. Again, I go back to our senior leadership meeting on yesterday. One of the things that we started on discussing, we talked about the board chart and making sure it has the form and function to deliver services to our schools in the way that they need to. But we also talked about the process and the process mapping of how we get contracts approved via at the school level and through central office. So the team is convening over the next two days to put together a process map to streamline that. We're also looking at ensuring that we have professional development via face-to-face and/or virtually for all people along the delivery chain who are part of contracts being signed both at the school level and at the district level.
All right, hold on. This young lady right here, and then this gentleman.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Tuesday, our camera was raised during the meeting. We seem to be very upset, very heated with the audience. Any message for some of them that was their first impression of seeing you at this meeting?
I really appreciate that question. First of all, I want to apologize. That's not who I am, and that'll never happen again. So thank you again for that question.
And also, do you have any interest in having the role permanently?
Yes, I do. Anyone who knows me knows in 2013, I was nominated as interim, well, not interim, but someone recommended me for interim. I didn't have an opportunity to apply for the job because at the time, they said anyone who wanted the permanent job could not fill in as the interim. So at the time, I didn't have an opportunity to apply because they decided to stick with the interim. What I did was continue to be professionally mature about what the board's decision was. The superintendent serves at the discretion of the board and who the board wants to go with, so I would not be truthful if I stood here and said that I didn't want the permanent job. But as I've always done, I've always followed policy, processes, and procedures, and what the board has deemed is their process or procedure for selecting whomever they want as the permanent superintendent.
When did the board approach you about making the interim?
Hold on, young man, you have a question, and then Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Dr. Richmond, you have a lot of uphill battles already, even prior to taking this particular role. Talk to me just about the billion-plus-dollar, I guess, infrastructure issue that you guys are facing, because that's something that kind of falls to the wayside when it comes to like kids not having heat, not having air conditioning. How are you going to tackle some of the infrastructure issues here in the district?
Again, those are some of the things that we'll be looking at as I roll out my 100-day plan. But again, I don't want to get in front of our board. Those are some decisions that we'll have to work together collaboratively with to finalize. I will, again, be working with senior leadership. I know we've had some discussions about those things internally, so again, we'll be looking at those things and addressing them.
My second question to you is of Dr. Richmond. Obviously, there's been a lot of talk about how they take over, and optimal legislation has to happen with that, but what's your response to, you know, what Representative Mark White has said, and kind of just everyone has watched you, what you owe next steps on?
What my responsibility is, is again, to meet with key stakeholders. I would hope that the state wouldn't want to come in and take over the district. But one thing that I think I bring to this role is that I've always collaborated with the state. When I initially came to the district office as a senior leader was through a school turnaround. What their role required me to do was to interface with the state around directives that they had given our schools that we were responsible for adhering to. And one of those reasons for us adhering to those things was to ensure that we wouldn't have state intervention or state takeover.
Lee?
A question for both the superintendent and the board chair. Just going off of what's been released and said publicly, in broad strokes, there were things that your predecessor did well, there were things that obviously the board didn't approve of. Is your map to success simply, or is it, in broad strokes, building on what she did well and not doing the things that she didn't do well, or the things that disappointed or brought everything that happened? And then, of course, you know, the similar question for the board chair. How do you measure success for this superintendent? You first, please.
What I would say is that the senior leadership team, when you think about how districts operate, the senior leadership team has been responsible for the day-to-day operations of our district. Much of that work, we as senior leaders have led. Some of those things we will probably continue with, but we will continue to evaluate those things and their level of effectiveness like we do with any strategy that we're implementing. Any things that the board may have concerns with is my responsibility to interface with the board and to talk to them about those things that they may have concerns about. So then, again, we as a team, we as a team, superintendent, senior leaders, the board, we're all growing in the same direction, and that comes with having goal alignment through our strategic plan, our academic plan, and those things that we know are going to move the needle in regards to student achievement.
I have a question for the board.
Hold on, hold on. Madam Chair, your response, and then the last question.
I agree with what interim superintendent Rod Richmond said, and transparency. We have to get a level of transparency where everything that he knows, the board knows. Everything that the board knows, the superintendent and his senior, interim superintendent and his leadership team will know. So we're going to work towards those goals.
My last question. My last question.
Then we can pull off.
My question is, when did the superintendent or the school board approach Dr. Richmond about the interim position? A county commissioner echoed the sentiment that he knew prior to Tuesday that he will be in that position. How, what was the relationship? How did that correspondence happen?
When I nominated Rod Richmond, he didn't know a thing.
When?
When I nominated him on Tuesday.
So I have a question for clarity, too, and this could be answered from one of the six who voted not for Dr. Fagans. Do any of you guys, and because this question was left unanswered on Tuesday, and this is what parents wanted to know, this is what educators wanted to know, why did you go like that? Do you feel like you could have been more transparent before Tuesday night's meeting about the problems that you guys are having with Fagans, Dr. Fagans? I feel like one question, because there were six of you guys, if you guys just wanted to have this moment to just speak your piece.
I appreciate that. I think I was one of the board members that gave extensive statement on what my concerns were on January 14th. And I also want to make sure that I also, I think in an op-ed, said that there were times all across Dr. Fagans' tenure during board meetings that these things were brought to her attention by the then sitting board, and even some of the things were brought to her attention by the newly seated board. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that that was happening at every single meeting. And I think there were also concerns that were brought up with Dr. Fagans individually. I know that I brought concerns up with Dr. Fagans. So I think that question is that it has been, we have been doing that all along, and I collectively, because, again, I wasn't sitting on the board in April. However, those things were evident.
That governance training that you were talking about, that's on February 10th, could you just talk a little bit about what that entails?
Last one, too. This is the last question, and you won't want to avoid by your side, okay? Last question for the news conference.
I ask the governors... I ask for governors' committee chair and co-chair to get it together by headway. We don't know what it's going to look like yet. Just to sit down and have a conversation about what governors look like for our district.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.